Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. Community comments? Seeing none, we'll move right along. Superintendent comments?
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. First off, I'm really happy this evening to share with all of you something that we learned last week. It also got some nice press attention vis-à-vis the Milford Daily News and the Metro West Daily News, the fact that our athletic director, Chris Smith, has been named as the recipient this year of the Ted Dampco Award by his professional organization, the Massachusetts Secondary School Athletic Directors Association. And this award is basically given to somebody who's kind of seen as the outstanding rookie, so to speak, as somebody who has three to five years' experience and has exemplified the highest standards of the profession and has also made some significant contributions to the school community. I put in the background notes our press release that came out, but I think Chris has done an exemplary job in his short tenure here and particularly in just kind of turning the program around and changing, really, just the culture of our athletic program here and working with all of our stakeholder groups, with our parents, with our student athletes, with coaches, to really set forth a positive tone. If you look at those bullet points, furthermore, he has presently, he's acting as the president of the athletic directors of our conference, the Dual Valley Conference. He's also taken on some leadership roles in the MIAA as far as members of, being a member of three different committees, game officials, volleyball, and girls lacrosse. And just all in all, just has done an outstanding job, far exceeding our expectations. So, we will have Chris on board at a school committee meeting coming up for recognition. As I said, he actually receives the award on March 29th during the Athletic Directors Association's annual meeting. So, congratulations to Chris on a job well done and a nice recognition. Second piece that I have for you is I put in your packet the proposed scope of work for the strategic plan. I've asked Maureen to solicit various organizations and consultants to act as an outside facilitator for our strategic planning process starting next month. It's essentially very, very similar to the document that we put out back in 2012. However, we updated it and particularly in looking at learning in a modern context and using some specific protocols regarding Portrait of a Graduate and Back to the Future, kind of planning backwards for the types of outcomes that we want for our students and therefore the programmatic implications. So, as I say in the background notes, I will keep you apprised probably by the next meeting as far as the plans for facilitation with regard to that. Okay. And then, last but not least, I want to just note, and we drafted these right around the time, right before the holidays, of just being explicit that we will have two early release days, March 21st and 22nd. That's for that second round of parent-teacher conferences that was just negotiated. We will be continuously sending that out to our parents, notifying them. We've sent out updated calendars as we usually do with snow days, kind of notifying where we are with regard to the last day of school, but we will be very explicit about noting those two half-days. Okay? And that's what I have for my report. You see?
Thanks. Then we'll move on to administrators' comments. And that was like Dr. Kung.
Hi. Do you, are you gonna put it up there?
Could you mind doing it?
Yeah, that's fine. Give me one second. I don't see it coming up. Do you have it on yours to come up?
I can definitely call it up, sure.
The PDC's not showing up. Do you have the PDC showing up? I never have a PDC. But I haven't had it in years. Joe might have to do it if he's got it. It's not an easy fix. Okay. You typically get it?
Yeah, usually. Oh, I can talk. Do you have access to the slides in your packet? So, I can begin if that's okay, and we'll see if we can get it up there. Basically, Joe asked me to just give a quick update just where we're at. And it's kind of perfect timing because we are starting our second round of curriculum mapping this week, so we have some science groups meeting tomorrow and we have a math group meeting on Thursday, and then we have some dates at the end of the month. But one of our goals, so it was the second slide, the strategic action step that we have, is to continue with our curriculum mapping. And one piece of that is we've established these set days where in the morning we're working on mapping with the departments vertically, but then we've started these vertical meetings in the afternoon, and that's what they've been asking for, to really have these K-12 vertical conversations. And so, on the slide three where it says "vertical curriculum days," we had our first ones. We started, you know, a little bit late, you know, in the fall because this is the first time we were getting this up and running. I would expect next year when we would do this, we'd establish it and start a little bit earlier in the year, maybe end of September, beginning of October, and have it be your true fall, so it's kind of almost two winter dates. But we met and had our first meeting for ELA on the 8th of December. Then we have math in November, and the rest in December. And then we set these dates for February and March, so you know, taking that job. So, just a quick overview of what we're doing. So, in the morning, wherever they're at in those disciplines in regard to their curriculum mapping that we do with the apps database, which I've tested over the years too. Most of the maps have completed their stage one, and stage one is what do you want students to now be able to do? So, that's the content, essential questions, and areas, and skills. And so, then, the last two years, we've been working on stage two, which are assessments, and essentially how you know that they are good. So, we've been working on in-depth assessments, attaching assessments, evaluating assessments. So, this year is the beginning of launching of stage three for those that have been able to get through the first two stages. And so, that's all about learning activities and learning plans. It's not to the detail of a lesson plan, but it's more overarching, you know, what resources are. Stage one and stage two are public. If, you know, we got to a point where it's looking in the public, and they might do a review process for that, that's been published, and that's in access to that on our website. Stage three won't be published. That's more internal. That's what we're going to be using, we're meeting together, and then, okay, let's change this rule, so we're going to be working on that. That's not fluid and isn't something that you typically will make public. But it's a great tool to see what we're doing, and collaborate, and hit into it for your detail on what the learning ideas are. A piece of that, I did send the packet, which is the curriculum packet, which is stage three. I'll have the other chance to look at that. But basically, that, those are the guidelines for stage three, so that was sent out to you. And what it gives, the directions in the beginning for the teachers of what the expectations are, but the tools at the back of it are really useful and important to use as well. And those are protocols that we can use with our teachers on how to review their lessons, review their curriculum, how to make improvements, look for depth, look for, we talked about standard and basic knowledge integration, so kind of gives different lenses and protocols for us to work on. And then, structure points, and ways of learning activities. And so, that has gone out to all the teachers, and we keep incorporating that in all these sessions. So, on the next slide, a couple of things that we worked on last time because of district-wide homework review. What I did, it was really interesting, what I did, I asked these questions in the last session of, you know, the ELA teachers, the math teachers, social studies. So, I asked, you know, what is the purpose of homework in math or in science? And we went through, you know, what your student had on, like, to students there, what their parents said. And so, you collected all that, and all of that data is going to come back. And it was a little bit, there was overlap, and somebody answered what there were unique answers to the disciplines. We started to have those conversations a lot more, and a lot of sharing with members of, say, elementary, middle, high school, all together, which is really helpful. And so, all of that's been collected and will be, you know, a main part of our district community as well. Our district-wide focus group will be that. Also, in the afternoon, we talked about, to go to the next slide, the vision of the graduates. So, I asked them, what skills do our graduates need to have in math, science, social studies, and ELA? It's kind of a preliminary thought. When you get to strategic planning, we're going to do a protocol called, like, a profile vision of the graduate, which is a little bit more intense, but just sort of a quick brainstorming. So, I asked each of the groups, and there were a lot more that they came up with in their brainstorms, but what was interesting is that these were some of the areas that we had overlap. They didn't dive deep into what content necessarily, skills that you might want. They really were thinking about in future problem-solving, 21st century kind of skills, so that I wanted to share those answers with you. The next slide. After we, I asked them about what their vision of graduate would look like, then we asked how this curriculum map would connect to the vision that the graduate, because it's always important for us to, with our mapping, to go back to, like, why are we doing this? So, I was spending time documenting, you know, what our curriculum is and make changes. And they quickly came up to the fact that we need that vision, the fact that it's linked to our goals, essential question, which I understand. So, those are some of the comments that we came up with about how mapping is supporting the work. And then, on the next slide, we have an example of what we call the true protocol. Although, what's interesting today is we heard that the person who created this is looking to change the name of the protocol today. We learned of that when we were teaching the protocol at high school. So, that was interesting. It's going to be named, oh, it four shifts. But anyways, it's, this is one lens that we've been looking at, to have teachers look at a lesson. First, we start with other lessons, and then we're starting to apply it to our own lessons. Where we pick a part of the protocol, so we've been focusing a lot on relevancy and also student agency. So, for example, at the elementary PD that we did, you know, a couple of weeks ago, Dave Quinn and I did a session on student agency. And a big piece of it was having the teachers view new lessons, including their own, in regard to student agency. So, what they do is they look at their lesson and then ask the question, say, a talk time or work time, you know, who's the primary driver of the work time or talk time? Is it interest-based? And then, you determine if it's students, teachers, both, yes, no, maybe. And then, you decide, you know, if that meets your intent, you wouldn't need to make a change. But if you feel like there are ways that you can make either five-minute changes or 15-minute changes, then that's how you could apply that protocol. So, we've been working across the district with that, and did that on these curriculum mapping days, and will continue to incorporate that into our work. And then, finally, I mentioned at the start that tomorrow and Thursday, we have, we're starting with science tomorrow, and then math on Thursday, and then at the end of the month, end of February, beginning of March, we have our ELA, social studies, for these current days and the future. And as we gather, you know, more about what we did on those days, we'll share it out. But I'll stay focused, we're going to talk about our philosophies, kind of building off of our vision with graduate, with our philosophy of ELA, district-wide, math and science and social studies. So, we're going to be able to do those conversations. Just so you know, an updated social studies and draft standard just from the release last week. If that's something you're interested in, they're taking a comment until, um, April. And so, they just worked with these, if you find them, I was going to reach out to me and I can share it out with you. There are some things that can change, is in it. There's a lot of great stuff, but there are some programmatic effects that may happen at some point. So, we are going to be in social studies, taking a close look at those standards, and that's going to be our work for the next year. In our science and math, they identified they really wanted to work at the progressions of skills and kind of on the outscales and Maureen Gray above, Gray below. And in ELA, they wanted to really start with writing. They thought that was a great starting point, and they're going to bring practical organizations and kind of look at how we're teaching writing and could there be overlap? We've had the winner, we're using different words, or using, use similar types of practices. So, just want to give you a quick preview of what I have there. And probably, I'll ask you to come to the floor out in a couple months or so, and meetings from now, and share, you know, any of our progress with our progress.
Any questions? Can I ask a question about the homework slide? So, let me just go back, a close look at homework. So, the questions that you're asking, what is the purpose of homework? Put your parent hat on. What would parents say? If you were a student, what would students say? Can you give me more context on that? Was this a focus group, or was this just something that you're presenting to your teachers and the teachers are kind of putting their parent hat on, or putting their student hat on?
Yeah, that's what they were doing. So, I used the fact that I had vertical teachers in ELA, K-12, in a room. And said, through the lens, our BIM and Apple Science Social Studies, said, you know, what they were looking at in this homework, and I want to get it through the lens as well, from their academic areas. And so, I asked those questions. And some of the cases I wanted to get at were what they identified as being meaningful, you know, as we talked about, learning to kind of think about what they're looking at for meaningful homework. That was, you know, in the back of my head. So, I also wanted them to, even though they're not students, or some are parents, but, you know, what are your students saying? And some said, oh, they actually do surveys, and they asked their students. So, they brought in some of those ideas, and many of us are parents, so I always give my awesome stories of being a parent. Some of you have heard it, where I've really grown myself as an educator in learning what it's like on the parent side and seeing what happens at home, too. And I know it's a different district, but we kind of talked about, so what are parents in here? What do you think? And what do you value in the most and what do you value the least? So, it was to kind of take advantage of the fact that we had teachers in the room across the discipline to really maybe start our conversation, too, of maybe there's some things that are going really well at different levels, maybe things we want to start changing, too. So.
Do you, what?
Go ahead.
So, it was like a focus group with teachers in those disciplines to contribute to the conversation.
So, what would be the next steps and where are we going with this? I'm going to defer a little bit to Joe. I know he's reached out.
The next step is to basically triangulate the data. Particularly, the most important is at the secondary level as far as looking at parent perceptions, doing surveys plus focus groups, but also student perceptions as well, and then having recommendations. That work at the secondary level is slated to begin this semester, and a lot of the work is being done now at the elementary level. As I said, when we talked about it during the strategic plan, I anticipate it's much more complex and thornier of an issue to tackle at the secondary level than the elementary.
Yeah, I remember we had talked about the fact that it started at the elementary level. So, when you say work is already being done at the elementary level, what kinds of things are we doing?
Surveying, and I know Deb and Jan have put together a committee to start gathering all that data, starting with surveys and then also with focus groups as well. But then also looking at some of the quantitative data as far as looking at some of the things that we can track, like the various apps, like Lexia and iXL, and things that are given as homework, seeing the frequency of how much it's given. Something like iXL, you can actually get reports of how long the child is actually online, working with it. And so, I'm using that type of data to think about, okay, what kind of recommendations that do we want to have moving forward? Because even at the elementary level, there's a real diversity of opinion.
Yeah, so that was going to be my next question. Sorry, Sean. What is the teacher's perception of all of this? Because I know that's probably a very highly debated topic about the meaningfulness of homework, but that you're going to have some that are advocates for homework, giving homework even at an elementary level, and it changes throughout the years. But, like, what has the reception been on kind of digging into this topic?
I think the consensus is long overdue.
That's right.
And I think we're still at a place where there is not consensus, and there's still a diversity of opinion.
Do you think that it's fueled by the standards?
Standards and testing, and let's say standards and testing fatigue. I recently had a great conversation with a fourth grade teacher, who was a very skilled teacher, who thought a lot of the homework, giving homework at that point, other than regular practice of reading, she didn't see a lot of use in it. She thought reading every single night was extremely important, and that could count as homework. But to hear, and I brought this up when we had the screening, "Most Likely to Succeed", "We've got to prepare these kids for the middle school." And she said, "Just step outside of yourself, and you're saying that about a nine-year-old." That, you know, it's now, you know, the middle school mantra was always, we've got to prepare kids for the high school. The high school's always, second, we've got to prepare kids, you know, for college. And now, it's actually backed its way down to that. And she was just kind of reflecting on potentially the absurdity of that. But, in contrast, there's teachers who say, "Well, no, kids need very regular practice with reading and writing, and computational skills, and so on." I think if there's one piece that's consensus, teachers see regular value, obviously, in the reading. And a lot of them do see the regular value in using online programs like Lexia or iXL, you know, to incorporate those basic literacy and computational skills.
I, I mean, we've had discussions about it, so you know this is near and dear to my heart. But I keep thinking about the concept of a lifelong learner. We keep using that phrase, a lifelong learner. And I think where we can be in a situation where we're beating our kids down with homework and we're creating the opposite of a lifelong learner. And then, we have a huge focus in the state right now on social-emotional skills, and I think that plays into it as well. So, I'm really excited that we're tackling this, because I think it's important.
And just in the initial, I mean, this is like kind of brainstorming to get us started. A lot of those themes came up in what they shared in conversations, too. So, many of the teachers, it's resonating, and it was a good start, for sure.
That's great.
So, I'm happy to share that.
So, I wanted to just make a couple of comments, and I'm focusing on homework, too. I don't know why. The, when we're talking about homework, in many cases, I understand where you're coming from and how you're asking questions of the people who are involved in homework, the students and the teachers and the parents. That's fantastic. There's nothing wrong with that. I'm wondering if we couldn't get a little bit more of a perspective between the teachers, how the impact on their homework affects the student and the parents. So, you know, it seems to happen more often than not that there will be a massive homework day and an extremely light homework day.
Yep.
And I'm wondering if we couldn't have some new ideas come out, like, say, guess what? This is, we've agreed as the ninth-grade teachers that this is math night, right? And the kids get practice on a specific discipline, rather than having to have intense homework on one, only to be staying up until, you know, midnight, getting all of your homework done. That doesn't, that doesn't help at all for the learning process. And the other, the other part of it is, so scheduling is one thing. I'd love to hear about that.
Yep.
And the other one is, have we thought about cross-discipline homework? So, having teachers collaborate on teaching a given subject related to another. So, for instance, things like writing about science, or, you know, being more eloquent in your, in your lab experiments, or whatever it is. I'm just brainstorming here. But those ideas could, could be ways that you could reinforce the different subjects while reducing the workload. You see what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
So, I'm wondering if that's a possibility, if we think out of the box a little bit and have, have the students really feel like they're beholden not just to one teacher to get a set of homework done, but they realize that it's something that's almost like project-based that they can go after.
Yeah, I think the key, I totally agree with you. I think a lot of people would. And it's coming up, I see it at the high school in conversations. So, when we are doing the food for thought with the students in particular, you know, common threads when we ask them, like, what do, one question is, and feel free to chime in, but what, what's the, what do you want your administrators and teachers to know? And what really resonates is, you know, how much I'm doing outside of school, how long the work is taking. And so, it's been nice to have teachers in those sessions with the students, and there's been, well, tell me conversations around it, like, tell me more, well, what could we do differently? And it's starting to build those conversations with students and teachers, and, you know, we've been part of it as well. And so, it's definitely trending as a conversation that we've had, you know, noticed explicitly here at the high school. And with the problem, you know, like, project-based learning, and the more that we're trying to, you know, bring that in and do more, I think it'll naturally lend itself. And also, we're talking about interdisciplinary, that will lend itself, too.
I'm really curious about, about the data that we can extract, and I know it's difficult to talk about this, but the data we can extract about when students start a particular piece of homework, how long it takes them, do they get confused during it? How long was predicted to take? How long did they take? Right? Those are, those are interesting little dynamics, and they could point out where the student is on the learning curve, as well as giving maybe realistic feedback as to whether that homework was too expansive for the night. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
So, I'm just curious about that.
I think some, Lexia in particular, because we just had a training with that, and that's just at the elementary level right now. But they have that data, so they're going through that with the teachers in their training a couple of weeks ago about you can see, you know, what problems that they had, how long that it took them, and then, you know, it helps you to kind of intervene. I know not everyone's doing it as homework, but they're, you know, looking at it in school to see kind of what kind of interventions you could, you know, help kids. But some of those digital tools, too, are things that we're going to take a look at because they have this backend data that we can get more.
For what you're really talking about kind of ties in totally with the Jack Snyder vision of a more holistic way of measuring school and district quality. Where Jack would say, and actually, we just had lunch on Friday, he would basically say, the way to get at that is you do push surveys via text to all your stakeholders.
Yeah, we've discussed that.
And that way, it's not overwhelming, but maybe one or two per week where even kids at the high school, they consent, you're going to get a text survey, and it's just going to be one or two questions.
Yeah.
And you answer them, and then you've got that data, and then you build that data over a semester or over a full school year, and then you get at, you know, not just one teacher, not just one grade level or one content area, but over the continuum of the school.
Yeah, I completely agree with that.
Yeah.
That's, that'd be cool.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for having me.
Moving on to subcommittee updates, we'll start with the Golden Apple Award. Moving on to subcommittee updates, we'll start with the Golden Apple Award.
Well, I'm excited we get to present this. This is our fifth Golden Apple Award that we're presenting tonight. And I thought it would be nice to just give a little refresher about what the Golden Apple is all about. So I'll just kind of repeat verbatim what we had initially imagined the vision of this award to be. This award seeks to acknowledge and reward staff that believe in and exemplify the true spirit of teaching, inspiring, motivating, and helping students and parents in the Menonuppin Regional School District. It recognizes an outstanding staff member that understands the needs of students and parents individually, as well as collectively, and helps meet those needs with determination, enthusiasm, and imagination. This person is an individual in our district that repeatedly goes above and beyond the expectations of parents, and helps to define our district as a safe, nurturing, challenging, and motivational place of learning. It is a staff member that genuinely makes a difference in the life of a student and their families. And I'll just reiterate that the person that is nominated doesn't necessarily have to be a teacher, it can be anyone across the district, any staff member, because I think that's important to note. We've had nominations for a variety of different types of staff members. So each nomination period presents us with a unique challenge, as we all know that ours is a district filled with some really great, hardworking, creative, and supportive staff. We see so many heartfelt nominations twice a year, and this period was no different. The committee reads each nomination thoroughly, extracting important details about the impact that this, this individual is making. And we use our rubric as a guideline. Our rubric helps us scale a nomination in four different areas. One, understanding the needs of students and parents. Two, demonstrating creativity, enthusiasm, and determination. Three, the degree of either academic or social emotional impact. And four, partnership and achieving excellence. So we use these traits to guide us in our decision, and we use the, the level of impact that these nominations detail for us. So I'd just like to say that we are very grateful to the people in this district, the students and the parents that are taking the time out of their busy lives to nominate a staff member in the Merzdi. And it really is very heartwarming for us and the entire committee to have the opportunity to read through all of these nominations, period after period. So once again, this time, we've all felt the same, it was a pretty great feeling. I think we're awed, I think we're humbled by the lengths at which our staff members are going for our students and our families. So it's always a very, very difficult decision. And again, thank you to all of our parents, and thank you to all of our outstanding staff here in the district. So tonight's award will be presented to an exemplary teacher, who without doubt has had a tremendous impact in the lives of students and families. In describing this teacher, I'll use quotes from each of the nominations that we've received during the past two years, actually, because this individual has actually been nominated several times throughout each of the periods. Some I will paraphrase to shorten, but it was very difficult, actually, to take out a lot of this round of nominations because of the detail with which our nominators gave on this particular individual. So like I've done in the past, I'll read the comments first, and the anecdotes first, before I reveal who our recipient is this time around, so that person can fully take in and get to just sit back and listen, and appreciate the impact that they have had on our students and our families. Here's what parents had to say. "This teacher is clearly dedicated to his students' welfare far beyond the classroom, and personifies a true spirit of excellence and an unwavering desire to teach and assist students and parents from the Merzdi. What makes him remarkable and outstanding is his true passion for his students to do well academically, but more importantly, his genuine desire to see them become successful, sound, amazing individuals in this world. It is not easy to put into the words the description of a person who teaches your children, supports your children on every level, inside and outside of the classroom, and truly touches the heart of your family, but I will try. When my family was in crisis, this teacher became much more than just a teacher to us. He has been a true lifeline for my daughter and a role model for my son. In addition, he has given me a sense of stability, knowing that my children have had his guidance and support. Before my child enrolled in DECA, she was very troubled and suffered from numerous problematic symptoms, including low self-esteem, depression, anger, and was often quite down, all of which were very concerning to me. I tried all approaches with her, but nothing helped. My child had not found an area where she connected or excelled, and felt that there was nothing she was good at. But then she became involved with DECA, and made the right connection with the right teacher. Because of DECA and this teacher's dedication and support, my daughter continues to thrive day after day at Nittmuck, after finally finding something she is good at. My teacher conference with this teacher was very meaningful for me. During the conference, he spoke about my child as a person, rather than just as a student. That conference was, and will probably always be, memorable to me, as it was different from any other conference in my lifetime. This teacher spoke to me deeply about my child's character, skills, abilities, strengths, and the areas of improvement. I felt that he knew them personally beyond academic skills. I left it, this conference, with tears coming down, as I was touched by the depth of his evaluation and the extent of his dedication. I was pleased to share this feedback with my child, and I enjoyed watching the happy glow that came with the news, an expression of emotion which was rare before becoming involved with the DECA program. In the classroom, he has energy and enthusiasm, and truly wants to see each student be successful. When my daughter struggled in his class, when my son joined his class late in the year, this teacher spent much of his own time outside of the classroom to connect with, guide, and help both of my children to do the best they possibly could do in his class. And finally, because of this teacher, my daughter completely transformed from being depressed and desperate to being confident and hopeful. Moreover, even though I'm sure he does not know this, he has improved the lives of all of those who were concerned about my daughter's well-being, so myself, her siblings, her grandmother, her aunts, and close friends as well. Exceptional individuals like him are the ones who make this world a better place. Even if he does not win this award tonight, he will always remain a true hero in our eyes." And that was condensing it. So our Golden Apple Award winner in January is a business education teacher at Nittmuck High School, and his influence extends far beyond the 72 class schedule. He serves as Nittmuck's DECA advisor in our award-winning DECA program, and he even finds time to coach the boys varsity golf team. He is in his fifth year in our district, and tonight, he becomes the fifth recipient of the Merzdi Golden Apple Award. Please join me in congratulating Ryan Cody. Come on up, Ryan.
Thank you very much.
Let me get a photo off of you.
Oh, now she's quiet.
All right, now I think we need a cuteness alert.
I understand.
She was very good.
Cheerios.
Big smiles and regretted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be quick, I always.
Please do.
preach on ums and ahs and how they speak, so I will try and do the same. First off, I should thank my wife, I spend a lot of time in this building, it's phenomenal, taking care of Caitlin. Yep, there you go. But thank you, Lynn, give me plenty of time to spend with the kids here, so. School committee, thank you very much for choosing me, much appreciated the words you said, really touched my heart, brought tears to my eyes, so I appreciate that. Dr. Ruscheck, thank you for hiring me five years ago. This is an awesome school district, we have great kids, great parents, great kids make my job easier, makes me look forward to coming to work every day. Ms. Moran, Mr. Clements, Jay Byer, who I email incessantly about balance sheets and the DECA account, thank you for your kindness with me. And then, just everybody in general, we have awesome teachers, obviously plenty of nominations, but I am blessed and honored, it's a privilege, and thank you very much for your time.
Congrats.
You got a little round of applause from Ryan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you very much.
As you've said, we do have many dedicated staff members here, but going through, being part of that committee and going through the nominees, it really was heartbreaking.
You know, one of the other things that I forgot to mention, in, you know, just having attended the Mass Conference in the fall, and knowing that there's this huge push towards the, you know, social emotional piece of students, listening to the nominations for Ryan was like, it was just so fitting. So, you know, that he's connecting with students and taking care of our students.
Thank you for presenting that, and all the hard work you did in putting that together. Next, we'll have a policy subcommittee update. Lynn doing that for us?
Absolutely. So policy subcommittee met immediately prior to this meeting at 6:00. We began a discussion of policy JLCD, administering medications to students, and we'll continue with more testimony and feedback coming up on February 17.
The budget subcommittee met on the 25th to begin reviewing the first pass budget, so I'm going to hand it to Joe when we go into more depth.
Okay. You should have in your packet the slide presentation, which I'm going to go over, and then also a document as I prepare every, every year with some background information that shows the demographics and so on. So what I'm going to do is, I will reference that document, but I will give you an idea of where we are right now at this point. We ended up meeting as a budget subcommittee on Thursday, and it was the day after the House One or the governor's budget was released. So as we typically do this type of year, we use the governor's numbers for our projected revenue, okay? So as we do every year, we establish some basic goals for the budgetary process. So once again, we're, we are putting forward a level services budget. There's a couple minor targeted needs, which I'll point out, but essentially, we want to maintain the positive momentum that we have going. With that, along with our vision of continuous improvement, we want to maintain what we're doing as far as maintaining our services and programs. And then as always, wherever we can find efficiencies or cost savings, to put them forward to ease the burden on our two communities. So just as a review, where we are right now as a district in FY18 in this current school year, I will show you a slide in a couple of minutes that details what our average class sizes are across our three levels. They're very positive, they're conducive to student learning, they're conducive to personalization. You know, it's kind of apropos that, you know, we announced first Chris Schmidt being recognized by a state organization. Within the last couple of years, we've had Mary Ann Moran as Assistant Principal of the Year, John Clements as Massachusetts Principal of the Year, you know, recognizing work of educators like Ryan. There's a lot of real strong successes academically, athletically, co-curricularly at Nittmuck. One thing that we did notice this year, as I reported at the beginning of the year in talking about enrollment, we've had a greater degree of matriculation from the 8th grade to the 9th grade, and I think that's directly reflective of the many successes going on at Nittmuck. I think we're in the process of kind of seeing a cultural change at Misco Hill with new leadership and with a new vision. And as we will spend Saturday, this coming Saturday, in a workshop that's dedicated just to Misco Hill, you'll see a very, very strong emphasis on improving the culture and climate, and specifically, what are we doing to instill the growth mindset more across the board. As always, I think for our youngest learners at Clough and Memorial, there is still that continued strong foundation in basic literacy and numeracy. However, there's very much a strong feeling of doing more with project-based learning, using structures such as Genius Hour to really get kids more immersed in hands-on learning. As you know, over the last four to five years, one of our major district strategic initiatives has been around building the inclusion model. I think we've had a lot of successes, particularly at the elementary level, and it continues to grow, particularly now here at the high school. And then, as we talked about, a continued emphasis on social emotional learning, and providing key supports and programs to our students, as we've talked about mentoring programs, particularly at the middle school level, and the ongoing work that we've done with anti-bullying and pro-social behavior programs, such as Second Step or KCR. So I think with all these things in place, and where the district is right now, the district is very well positioned for the commencement of a new strategic planning process, which, as I said, will begin next month. So where are we as a district? Our official October 1st enrollment numbers are just a hair under 2,300 students. We're at 2296. As we talked about, we actually saw a gain of approximately 30 students from last year to this year, while, whereas we were predicting a decline. So I think some of that has been the greater degree of matriculation. You know, we had a shift of approximately 30 students at Nittmuck, and really what we're trying to get at the hard at is, what's the move-in rate? That's a little tougher to get a hold of. Usually, the enrollment projections that I get at NezDeb just kind of speak to the birth rates in the communities. So looking at that, looking at the birth rates, looking at the matriculation rate, I am projecting essentially a level enrollment for next school year. We will see a decline in all likelihood at Clough, if you look at the 2012 births versus the 2013 births. And the assumption is also for a similar matriculation rate from 8th grade to 9th grade, so actually, Nittmuck would increase by approximately 20 students. So with that said, we should be very, very similar to our enrollment numbers. When you break down between the two communities, you see it's still right around that 44/50 cent split. As a matter of fact, from last year to this year, I think it changed by something like three one-hundredths of a percentage point. As far as our average class sizes. As far as our average class sizes, you see what they are, they pretty much have been maintaining, with the exception of Clough where we saw a slight decline, and Memorial because we had a greater amount of kindergarteners, a slight increase, and then also a slight increase at NIPMOC. But as you can see, they're still very much in a reasonable range. So for this proposed budget, and what I will stress is, it is looking at what we project to be potentially available revenue. It is a $35,255,621 proposal that represents a 2.32% increase over our current fiscal year. As I said, we are projecting this to maintain level services, and there's a couple small targeted needs which I'll talk about in a minute. And then, it would maintain our class sizes and build on our current momentum. So what I'm going to do first is I'm going to go through what the big ticket items are as far as the drivers, and then talk a little bit about the other side of the house, the revenue. So obviously, the biggest chunk of our increase is our contractual obligations to salaries. So our overall salaries for all employees is up about $618,000, actually closer to $619,000, which represents 3.21%. So that would consider, that would be inclusive of a 2.15% negotiated COLA, plus any steps and lanes increases. With regard to our health insurance, another major driver, we're budgeting a 3.9% increase, and we're pretty solid on that this year. Through some very, very good work, Jay negotiated a 0% increase in healthcare insurance for our active employees, and we're looking at about an 8% increase for our retirees, those folks that aren't, have retired but aren't yet Medicare eligible. So with that said, it's about a $167,000 increase. And then, we've had this pattern over the last three or four years, a parent or a 10% increase, a 9.3% increase in our assessment from Worcester County Retirement. That's for our employees who are not part of the Massachusetts teacher retirement system. Sean, did you have a question? Okay. As far as other contractual obligations, next year will be in year two of our transportation contracts with Telstone and Sun. It's a 5.2% increase, which is $81,200. And then, a fairly sizable increase, 13.9%, about $112,000 in special ed transportation costs. As far as student services, here is really one of our targeted needs that we feel is very, very important to address, and that being adding a teacher to the STAR program and restoring the STAR program to Clough Elementary School. If you recall, three years ago, we actually had the enrollment down to something like five students, and we were going down from five to three at Clough. So we collapsed the program to bring those students over to the STAR program at Memorial Elementary School. Realize the STAR program is our in-house program with, for students on the autism spectrum that have fairly significant needs. So, right now at Memorial, we have 15 students in the program. It's basically taken over three full classrooms. And that breakdown now is nine students from Upton and six from Mendon. We are getting three additional students to the program, and actually, one will be coming to Misco. So next year's student population is slated to be 17 students. I don't think it is fair or educationally sound to have a classroom that large or those classrooms large. Plus, I really feel that those students from Mendon should be in their home community schools, with their peers, with, you know, the kids that live in their neighborhoods and so on. So we feel like that that is a very, very important need. So we've budgeted in this budget, an additional teacher to restore the program that at Clough, and now the seven students that would be from Mendon that would be accessing that program. Something that I think we should be talking about, and we should be actively problem-solving and so on, has been, we've got an increase of about $157,000 in non-resident vocational tuition. Okay, and specifically what we're talking about is predominantly one school, Norfolk Aggie. Okay? When I became superintendent seven years ago, we had three students that accessed Norfolk Aggie. It's now up to 15. And this is a significant amount of money between tuition and transportation of these students. We also have one additional student who moved into our district, who is going to, will now be a total of two students, going to Tri-County Vocational School. And realize they charge at a higher rate than our feeder school BBT does. So this is becoming a real, real challenge to manage this. So we do have to cover ourselves, an additional five tuitions built in for Norfolk Aggie. Our special ed tuition are essentially level, as you can see, and actually a very slight decrease. And then with regard to buildings and grounds, it is level funded. And then we also have a net increase of $10,000 to go towards having a full-time school resource officer in Mendon. As you may or may not know, right now, Upton has dedicated school research officer, Officer Ambrosino, who splits up his time between the three schools in Mendon, I mean, Upton rather. In Mendon, it's only a part-time assignment. So, at the beginning of the process, I had a conversation with Chief Kersey, who broached the subject with me about having a similar type situation in Mendon to match what we have in Upton. As far as technology, the largest expense here is looking to refresh what we have in place with the iPads. We're up into a place now, we're probably about upwards of 90% of our iPads for our one-to-one learning program are district-owned and operated. Some of these iPads now are getting upwards to be four or five years old, so we're looking to renew a fairly sizable portion of our fleet with a three-year lease. And then, kind of balancing that is our textbook and instructional supply lines. If you recall, over the last four years, we made the move to a new literacy series, The Reading Wonders, and a new math series, Go Math. That's off the books now, so actually, our textbook line is down approximately $115,000. Our elementary principals are pretty passionate about the request of classroom sets of leveled readers for our students in grades one and two. So that's probably one of the most sizable line items in our textbook lines. So, if you were to take all of the expenditures as-is, that we've already reviewed with all of our principals, with all of our department heads, the total expenditure increase right now is at 3.34%, okay? Which translates to about a $1.1 million increase on our budget. But now we go to the opposite side of the coin, the revenue. And as it's typically been, but this is probably the absolute worst that it's been in memory, in the governor's budget, our increase in Chapter 70 was $20 per student, which translates to $43,440. And then, the regional transportation reimbursement line was level funded, or I should say, the percentage reimbursement, which is approximately 65%, was also level funded. So that was $28,318. So at present time, our total increase in state aid is $75,628, which is a whopping 0.57%. So, that obviously puts us in a position where the burden unfortunately falls to our two towns. So, the thing to look at, and I usually drill down into greater detail when it's time for the March budget hearing, is the first thing that we look at is the MLC, or the Minimum Local Contribution. And the Minimum Local Contribution is what the state details, or actually the Department of Revenue details, based upon a community's aggregate wealth and how far they are from the target share that they should be contributing towards the budget. The MLC to Mendon increases by a little under $400,398,264, and actually, to Upton, by $520,330. So some pretty significant increases. What we end up doing in looking at that, and also, you know, speaking to both town officials and seeing what is doable, and what is affordable, and what is realistic, is realize we end up, if you look on the background information and you look at the funding sheet, which is on, just right on page two, we back it out of operational additional, which is the previous override money. So at this juncture, we are requesting, including debt service, an additional $341,992 from Mendon, and an additional $381,912 from Upton. So between those two, the total local assessment is an additional $723,904. As far as things that we fund internally, this is really in the category of district receipts, it's essentially status quo, where we will allocate from excess and deficiency, $400,000 once again, another $150,000 from our revolving accounts. And then really, one exception is the choice, because we actually have fewer kids choicing out of the district and slightly more, not by a lot, choicing in, we've increased that by $100,000. So the net-net is, the total district receipts comes in at $650,000. So again, going with a revenue-based budget, not the total expenditures, and looking at conceivably what it anticipated revenue increase, the district would be looking at approximately $800,000 additional dollars, to be specific, $799,533, which translates to the 2.32% increase. So again, this is just another way of looking at it, this is on the funding sheet that I described on, described on page two of this document, where the net increase is a 2.32% increase to our budget, including debt service, it would be a 3.68% increase to Mendon, and a 3.40% increase to Upton. So, as you saw, the difference between that 3.14% increase in expenditures versus a 2.32% increase in potential revenue, shows a gap of approximately $365,000 at this present time. As I say, every year, usually at this time, there's still variables on both sides of the house, both on expenditures and also on revenues. It'll be key to see where the House and the Senate budgets do come through. Got a very nice email from Senator Moore's assistant. He will be coming to our school committee meeting, not the next meeting, but the meeting after on February 26th, to kind of speak to the budget process. I also intend on, as we've done in years past, kind of making that a legislative evening. I'll also invite Senator Fatman, Representative Meridian, and Representative Murray to weigh in on their piece. And then, you know, these three also represent expenditures that we've got to take a look at, where we come in on some of those tuitions that I was describing before, some potential retirements, or, and last but not least, where our kindergarten enrollment actually comes in. So some potential cuts happening in those areas, along with potentially some new revenue to bridge that gap of $365,000. So, as I say, every year, I think the bottom line, it is about maintaining what we have. I can't stress enough that I think the district is in a very, very strong position. I think there is a strong commitment to those three pillars that are really our vision around excellence, innovation, and continuous improvement. And this'll be another budget, once we finalize, that I'm confident that will keep us in a very, very good place. So as I do every year, just again, we're very, very early in the process today on January 29th. You know, in all likelihood, we're going to be going to our open budget hearing in a matter of six weeks, still having to use the governor's House One budget numbers. Hopefully we'll get a little more information, you know, I was discussing this with somebody in central office. It's great news that we locked in at 0% on our health insurance, you know, that's always great news, for the most part, you're not going to do better than that. The bad news part of it is, that's not a well we can go to, to hopefully find some savings. So I'm not going to lie, it's going to be a challenge. As we typically do, we know the timeline, that usually the House budget is released in mid-April, and then the Senate budget is released in mid-May. By then, hopefully, we'll have a better handle on where exactly we're going to be. So that's where we are, and I'd be more than happy to take any questions if you have them.
Want to know, Upton Town Meeting is made good.
Oh, okay. Thank you, I'll fix that.
So what is the MLC? So with the MLC increases the state is asking for, will the towns be at their MLC targets?
No.
Where will they be?
Oh, at what were projected. Oh, at what we're projected, what we're asking for an assessment?
What they've come back, what you had in the other, what you had in the other sheet and project on the slide, if you back up, that right there, nope, go to that slide.
Yeah.
Sorry. So that new, that additional, let's say, that additional $398,000 that's there, that will bring Mendon to what level of MLC?
In theory, if Mendon paid that Minimum Local Contribution to the regional school district, and recall, we also have BBT, and to a much, much lesser extent, Norfolk Aggie, they would be at target share.
Believe it or not, we're actually going backwards this year. We're not going to be target share. I think it's going to go down to like 4% and Upton's around 2%. So I think Upton gained slightly, but Memphis losing around, and I ask why, but I haven't got the answer yet.
Something that we, I haven't gotten into the weeds yet, Phil, of looking at the percentages for target share, but we did know, and it's directly tied to enrollment, the Minimum Local Contribution for Mendon, for BBT, only increased by $16,000. That's what it was, right? And for Upton, it actually decreased by $95,000. So that's probably directly commensurate to NIPMUC, and BBT enrollment changes, shifts from year to year.
Okay. Work to be done?
There is work to be done.
Sounds like massage bowl full of jelly.
Well, that's very...
It's like the analogy that I heard of stapling something to jelly. Yeah. Jell-O, right? Yeah. I mean, you know, people have asked me for perspective. Realize in years past, we've had larger gaps at this time. You know, we've once had gaps upwards of $700,000 to $800,000. The issue at hand is the places that we need to find savings or potentially infusion of more money are not as great as the potential where you could save in healthcare insurance. You know, realize at this point, last year, we had a gap of, I think it was somewhere in the ballpark of about $550,000 to $600,000, but we had not yet finalized our healthcare. And when we finalized the healthcare by making a change in the deductible structure, you know, that helped eat up probably at least 50% of where our gap was. So it's going to be a challenge. We've got some work. You know, I'm confident it's doable. I'm confident we can get to a good place, again, to keep a level service budget in place. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Old business, we have on the agenda, and new business, nothing there either. There's correspondence, it was like you wrote a letter to our legislators.
I did. Speaking of legislator night.
Yes.
So just something to be cognizant that's been playing out, and this is something that, a campaign that's been endorsed by both the Superintendent's Association and also the School Committee Association. This kind of speaks to FY18 and also has implications for FY19. But in the final phases of the budget negotiation process, in those first couple of weeks in July of last year, when it was a conference committee, and there was concerns about closing the gap because of about the revenue projections in the last quarter and so on, the circuit breaker account, which, if you recall, is the reimbursement of out-of-district special education costs, was actually cut by nearly $26 million. So as a result, instead of providing a reimbursement rate of 65% of excessive cost over four times the per pupil rate, I'm sorry, instead of providing reimbursement of 75%, it was cut back to 65%. So what this letter does is, it's on behalf of all of us around this table, asking our legislators to solicit the governor to file a supplemental budget request to fund that $26 million that was cut, to bring it up to 75%. And realize that that 75% is actually statute. So right now, it's being violated, so we shall see. And maybe that's something that we can obviously pursue with Senator Moore, whoever comes on the 26th.
Excellent. Thank you. Other matters not anticipated by the committee within 48 hours of the posted meeting? We have none. Future agenda items will be the school committee workshop at Misco Hill, for Misco Hill planning on February 3rd, and it's the Misco administrators, as well as the school committee, getting together to work through that process. And then the approval of the 2018-19 MURSD calendar on February 12th. Okay, anything else? You have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:21.